Good evening. The March 24, 2016 Longview City Council Meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Pastor Marshall Coffey of Alpine Church of Christ.
Join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we just come today thanking you for life. And we thank you most of all for your goodness and love shown to us in Jesus Christ. This week, as churches across our city prepare for Easter and all of the events of Holy Week, Father, we ask that we would be able to exemplify your love to this world, that we would also demonstrate what resurrected life looks like, and most of all, that we would be unified and demonstrate by that unity that you are our God, and that we would impact the city for you. And Father, we do ask for the city that you would bless our schools, that our children would be prepared and ready to contribute to this world, that you would give them safety in their schools, also in our government, that you would bless with wisdom, and even this council today, that you would bless them with wisdom and give them guidance in all of their duties. Father, we thank you for all the servants that serve this city, for the police, and the fire, and the EMS, for the city workers of all kinds, and we pray that you would strengthen them in their work, and also protect them and guide them in their duties. Lord, as we look at the world around us, as we consider the terrorism that is plaguing our world, and the hate that is being shown, we ask that you would conquer these things, that you would eliminate them from our world. Father, that you would bring a better way, a way of unity and peace and love, and that you would bless all those in Belgium that are suffering now, and please, Lord, let your presence be felt. For the upcoming elections for our nation, for our state, for our city, we ask that you would guide and bless and put the people in public office that could lead us with wisdom and dignity, and that we would all be blessed by their governance. And finally, Lord, we just thank you for the power of the resurrection and the hope that we have through Jesus. And again, bless this time and this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Coffey. Tonight, with our employee recognition, the parks, operations, and maintenance ball field crews is responsible for 48 game fields throughout Longview. Don't bring them up yet. Don't come in the door, but don't come up yet. They are responsible for overseeding, weeding, painting, and chalking the fields. They put out the bases, pitching mounds, corner flags, goals, and yard markers. They clean and maintain the bathrooms, pick up litter throughout each of the complexes. Their primary objective is to provide the highest quality facility in all of Texas while providing the best experience possible within Longview's vast park system. Each week, there are over 200 games played throughout various softball, baseball, soccer, kickball, and football leagues sponsored by local organizations. The crews' work does not end there, though. For 2016, they have already worked 10 different events on weekends with 42 more scheduled throughout July. As example of how much work and effort goes into each weekend, over the March 19, '20 weekend, there were 182 baseball games and 75 soccer games played. The day began at 6:00 a.m. and didn't end until after midnight. So in addition to their normal 40-hour work week, an additional 282 hours were worked to welcome visitors to Longview. Ladies and gentlemen, this is something that nobody sees happen, but I can guarantee you, having been there before, coaching baseball in Little League, having to strike fields and do things like that, maintain them, mow them, take care of them, it is maintenance beyond maintenance. So my hat goes off to you guys who do this, and I want you to come up one at a time as they call your names. I want to recognize you individually as you come up, okay? Ray Bostick. Mike Tamanio. Sorry about that, I butchered that one, buddy. Daniel Small. Ricardo Andino. Michael Corrigan. Eduardo Gonzalez. Wilton Jones. Larry Kirkland. Michael Lee. Jalen Shan Shepard. Ryan Stevens. How about a round of applause, ladies and gentlemen, here at Longview. You guys do such a phenomenal job to make our parks as good as they can be, and when I go out and look at the parks, especially in Beard Park, where it's such a showcase for Longview, and it brings in so much revenue for Longview, this is what makes that happen, ladies and gentlemen. This does not happen on their own. These fields are high maintenance. Because they are high-quality fields, it requires a lot of time, a lot of effort, and I can tell you, their job is only going to get worse from today forward, because we're into the summertime, and it's hot out there. You spend a lot of time, and we appreciate every single minute you spend out there, guys. From the bottom of our hearts, from the city of Longview, from the citizens, from the teams that play out there, we thank you, and our hats off to you guys. Thank you very much. Mayor Mack, I'd just like to add one thing. Please.
I have six grandchildren that use the different parks around Longview, and I want to say thank you, because these are the fellows literally that keep the lights on at night. Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. Okay, we are to citizen comment. I have no speaker cards. Is there a mistake? Does anyone have anything that I have to speak about and then fill out a card later? Hallelujah, grace like rain. Unbelievable. Okay, that's a great deal. Not that we don't hear from you, but it's nice when things are going well. Okay, presentation item. Could I have Marla Lamana and Rosa Hopkins from the Women's Center of East Texas up front, please? I'm not going to bite, come on. No, I'll do the talking, you just stand there. We're going to read a proclamation regarding Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Day. Whereas the Women's Center of East Texas has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize April 1, 2016 as a Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Day in the city of Longview, whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impacts our community, and statistics indicate that 1 in 5 women and 1 in 71 men will be sexually assaulted at some point in their life, so we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention. And now therefore, I, and the authority vested in me as mayor, city of Longview, do hereby proclaim April 1, 2016 as Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention Day in Longview. Thank you all so much. You know, this is an ongoing process that we will never eliminate, but if we don't make steps on a daily basis, as you all do, taking care of those involved, this is a tragedy that scars for life. And you all are the buffer, you all help these individuals, and you bring awareness. And that's what we ask, we thank you for that, we thank you for investing in our city and investing in the lives of people that need it the most. So hats off to you all as well. Thank you so, so much. Thank you, ladies. Okay, tonight in our public safety update, both of our chiefs are out of town, so we will not have a public safety update at this council meeting. Okay, consent agenda. Are there any items council would like to pull off for separate consideration? Okay, before we proceed, I have just a couple of questions to ask of our, well, whomever can answer these questions. On B and D, my question is, and I know the answer, I think, but I need somebody to tell me the answer. We're awarding large sums of money to people doing contracts for us, but they're Tyler companies, and my concern is, what do we have to do to make these, in the future, Longview companies doing work in Longview and not sending our money to other cities? And I know it's a bit of a process, Roland, I know that.
It is. We do solicit bidders. We did have bidders that came in. Unfortunately, with public works projects, it's always the low bidder. You can't give preferential treatment with those projects. We do solicit them. They are the ones that know about our bids beforehand. We reach out to them. Unfortunately, for the signal work, there are not contractors within the city of Longview that perform that work, that is specialized work, and so hence, there's only one bid on that job, because the people that do the traffic signal improvements throughout the state of Texas are very few.
Great explanation, I appreciate that. I just want, I want the citizen to be aware, we want to do business with Longview companies. We encourage it, so this is one of those things that we cannot control. Roland, it's my understanding that there are certain things that we can bid out, that we can give, is it, I'm sorry, let's let you go, but that we can give a certain percentage allowance for a local contractor, is that correct?
I would have to defer to what contracts those are in particular. There are a few instances that you can do that.
Yeah, we use the local preference whenever we can. It's a 5% for goods and services on certain things. Public Works is by state law the low bidder.
So we cannot even change it if we wanted to, to be the other direction on Public Works?
There's one exception that we might, could look at, is there's a, for projects that are $1.5 million and less, we might could do a competitive sealed process, but other than that, we have to go with a low bid.
I understand. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. I just wanted some clarification on that. The next thing I have, I need to ask a question of, I guess, Michael Shirley will answer this one. On E, we're imposing a fee for application for certificate registrations for the credit access businesses. Tell me why we're imposing a fee?
That $20 fee is to cover the administrative cost of reviewing the application and issuing that license.
So that's to cover our costs of doing the business?
Yes, sir, and that's consistent with other business licenses that the police department issues.
Perfect. Just needed clarification on that. I hate to impose any additional fee on any business, if we can avoid that, but if it's to cover our costs, then that's doing business as we must. So thank you for that information. I appreciate y'all's indulgence. Okay, if no further questions, can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. Okay, action item. Consider resolution authorizing approved distribution of $10,000 in hotel occupancy tax money for the Great Texas Balloon Race. Mr. Karen?
Good evening. The Parks and Recreation Department receives hotel occupancy tax money for sporting events and the Great Texas Balloon Race. We supported that event last year, and we plan to do that again this year, and so we're asking to provide them $10,000 from the hotel occupancy tax for their promotion and advertising of that event to bring people to Longview.
Mr. Karen, I can't think of any better way to spend $10,000, because that is an incredibly successful event. I know Mr. Drogi is here, and Mr. Drogi puts on a phenomenal event out there, and Dan, our hats off to you as well, because that, last year, I was overwhelmed with how successful it was, how enjoyable it was, how entertaining it was, how well it was prepared and presented. And I know the people that come to Longview and witness that, they will come back, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate us being able to donate that money, because that's as good a money as we spend anywhere in Longview. It's an event that puts Longview on the map nationwide, which is good for us, and it's been carried on, and it just gets bigger and better every year. So, Dan, thank you, and all the volunteers that help you, our appreciation from us to you, and from the city of Longview to you and your crew, thank you so much.
Thank you. That's what I was going to say, it's all volunteer-driven, so thank you very much.
It is volunteer, and you know, and if you go to the events, the pre, before the races, you'll see how many volunteers are out there wearing shirts, which I still have not been able to get one of those shirts, and I've tried for years now. They said I had to go chase a balloon down in some private property and break the law to get a shirt, to get a shirt, and I'm thinking, well, it wouldn't be the first time I broke the law, I think, but, oh, well, I shouldn't have said that, right? But I'll do what I have to do, but y'all, it is volunteer-driven, and we appreciate all the volunteers that participate in this and what y'all do. Thank you so, so much.
Could we have a date, just for those to plan ahead of time?
Is there a date yet for this, Dan? Sorry to put you on the spot, but if anybody knows, you will. It's in the cool part of the year, I know that.
Yeah, it's nice and cool, July 22 through the 24th.
Perfect. Look at all those writing it down.
We've got Restless Heart doing the singing for us Friday night, and a up-and-coming country-western singer, Aaron Watson, Saturday night.
You know what I was impressed with the most of anything, Dan, last year, besides the balloon glow, which is so enjoyable? I couldn't believe how many vendors were out there selling goods and services, and how many people were standing in line to buy those goods and services. So whatever y'all are doing, it's bringing people here, it's attracting folks, and that's a great, great thing for our community. So, once again, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. That's a surprise, isn't it? Okay, the next item is, consider resolution amending the council rules or procedures. There are some issues that I would like to bring up to discuss with council, and I want you to understand what this is about. This is about speaking times during council meetings. And I know Mr. Isaac's over there, and I know we discussed this yesterday, but this has nothing to do with keeping people from talking. And I know it wasn't portrayed that way on purpose, and I know it wasn't meant to be that way, and I want everybody to understand, we've surveyed many, many cities, and we're at the top of the list as far as allowing time, and I don't mind time, but what, here's what I'm hearing, and this is why this was brought up. We've had a number of meetings since I've been back on the council where we've had a number of speaker cards, and we're happy to hear, we will sit here as long as people want to speak, but what I've seen and what people have told me is, they want to speak, but there's too many people speaking, and they don't want to spend that much more time. So, in my experience, time is like space. However much you have, you're going to fill it up. If we gave people 20 minutes to talk, they would talk for 20 minutes. But this isn't a filibuster. This isn't where you're up there trying to wear us out, because we're going to be here till it's over with. But what it is to do is get your point across, and I went back and I looked at all of our meetings that we've had, and I don't think we've had a single meeting where any one of us in any item talked for more than three minutes. And we know as much as anybody about the items that are coming up. So I think if you can't get your point across in three minutes, you're not going to get across in six minutes, or nine minutes, or 15 minutes. Get your point across. We have the ability within this change to allow extra time if we so desire. No one will ever be denied a chance to speak. You hear me say it every time, even if you didn't fill out a speaker card, we'll allow you to come and speak and fill out a card later. This is not to eliminate you from speaking, this is to eliminate how much time is spent to say the same thing over and over, which I do a lot. I say the same thing over and over again, mainly because I'm usually talking to my brother, and he's not real, it takes a while to get it across. But here's the example. If we have six, or 10, let's say we have 10 speaker cards, and they can speak for six minutes apiece, that's an hour. Or we can listen to 20 people speak in that same hour. And I think what my objective is, is to hear as many people that want to speak, but some of them are just absolutely frustrated with the number and the time and how long it takes, therefore, they don't speak, and I don't want that. I want them to speak. This is more about free speech than taking free speech away. We're not taking anyone's free speech away, we're just limiting the time. And so, and this is something that's out of the ordinary. I know when Jay was elected 10 or 11 years ago, Jay changed citizen comment from the way we used to do it as a council. That's not unusual. We're not trying to eliminate anything, we're just trying to make it more productive for anyone that wants to speak, and not ever going to deny anyone the opportunity to speak. So let that be very clear. Everyone will get to speak that wants to, we're just limiting the time. And the fact that we can extend time if we so desire, that's the priority that we have. So that's what I wanted, and if you look at these other cities, if you look at, look at, let's say Tyler. Tyler doesn't even allow citizen comment on a non-agenda item. We'll allow you to come and speak on anything that you want to speak about, and you get your three minutes. They don't even allow you to talk if it's not on the agenda. Most of these places, Texcana, five minutes, Frisco, five minutes, Richardson, five minutes, Plano, five minutes. Those are all Metroplex. Now look at the ones that are three minutes. Allen, Irving, McKinney, Farmers Branches Temple, Kilgore. Three minutes is an average amount of time, so I don't think we're limiting people, we're just allowing more people to participate. And that's the intent of this, so take it for what it's worth, and don't read anything else into it. That's all it is, is allowing more people to participate in the same amount of time. So that's all I got to say about that. Any other comments about this?
Mayor, one thing I noticed, too, that this change allows the flexibility for the speaker to speak during citizen comment or during an agenda item that they're interested in, which I appreciate you allowing them to do.
Yes, and we really didn't have that ability.
No, we did not.
And you know what else this also does, which I think it's good? We actually can comment back if we so desire. I know Mr. Finley doesn't like us to, but we can comment back. Is that not right, Mr. Finley?
If it's a posted item, you can talk about it all you want. If it's something that's not on the agenda, then you know you're limited to talking about placing it on a future agenda.
Correct.
But if it's on the agenda...
We can respond back, even if it's during citizen comment, and it's a posted item.
Sure.
That's what I thought. So it just, it increases our ability to communicate, is all it does. This is not taking anything away from anybody, so thank you all. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll consider an ordinance adopting the 2012 International Property Maintenance Codes. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard. At the last council meeting, I gave a presentation over the Property Maintenance Code, and as far as what the code was. As you may remember, we talked about that on February 10th, the Construction Advisory and Appeals Board made a recommendation with a 5 to 0 unanimous that you consider this for approval. And I'll try to keep it under three minutes, I promise.
Good.
Is that on? No, there we go. Well, technical difficulties, there we go. This was a major theme in the comprehensive plan under the neighborhood and livability to provide and coordinate programs to prevent the deterioration of buildings and landscape and parking. The Property Maintenance Code would be a tool for that. The Property Maintenance Code is a 40-page document that provides regulatory guidance in seven areas of maintenance. It would provide a tool for holding owners accountable, which directly combats neighborhood blight, and also the prevention, would provide the prevention of demolition by neglect. As far as the changes to Chapter 19 of the city code, we created 19121, excuse me, amended Chapter 19, 121, minimum standards for multifamily dwellings. As you may remember, we talked about how, under multifamily ordinance, we already have property maintenance standards, and so what we've done there is repealed the majority of that section and reverted to the Property Maintenance Code as our standard for that, so that it's concise and consistent, and we did keep some of the details that were very specific that we needed for multifamily. Under the changes to 19, Chapter 19 of the city code, we did add where the Property Maintenance Code is adopted, and that would be the 2012 version, and also adopting the appendix, which is standards for boarding, and that would be where you have a vacant building where you're boarding it up. There's a standard that they have to follow, not just throwing up wood of any kind. There's actually a standard that they would have to follow. As far as the changes to the IPMC that we did, and that was some of the questions at last meeting where we would make it unique to Longview, some of the changes or exceptions were, we replaced generic language in there that talked about the due process with the specific language that we have either in state law or city code to follow in line with that. Also, in the demolition section, we repealed that section and just referenced the existing city code, Chapter 19, Article 3, and then repealed the section for means of appeal, just to be consistent. Also, in Chapter 3 of the general requirements, we repealed the section dealing with weeds and so forth, and just referenced our city code, Chapter 49, dealing with garbage, trash, and weeds, just to be consistent. One of the main things that we did under the interior surfaces, which was a comment that was made both at the Construction Advisory and Appeals Board and by Councilman Wright, is making sure that we didn't have the ability, we didn't want the ability to have to regulate the interior of a structure as it related to walls, paint chipping, plaster chipping, strictly cosmetic. But we did want to retain the ability to regulate inside a home or business if it was truly substandard or had deficiencies in the structural, or if it was unsanitary, where you maybe have a hoarder or somebody like that, where we're probably already out there for other reasons, problem property situation. You know, we would want to have the ability, you know, to regulate unsafe and unsanitary structures. This would be administered on a complaint-driven process, it would be an active part of our neighborhood revitalization sweeps, and as I stated before, primary focus would be on the exterior. However, interior enforcement would be complaint-driven and give us that ability. Be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
I was going to let him start. Okay. Thank you. A little bit of discussion, I'm not worried whether I'm supposed to say Mr. Shirley or Michael, since I'm about twice your age, I may say Michael.
Either one is not with me.
All right. Three times the age, Cindy.
One comment, well, you know, you know, one comment, and this has to do with my age. Black print on a dark, on a purple background is sure hard to read, Michael. Maybe we can work on that next time. All right. One thing that, and we just, I was, I visited with Michael a couple days back in his office, and we discussed several of these items, and one thing I want to say thank you about is, you did not do a mass acceptance, as you showed. You didn't just fill the book in and put it out there and say, this is what we're going to do. In other words, you literally went through it and read it and familiarized yourself with the items that you removed, that we already have sections pertaining to. I'm not sure if I said that the right way, but what it amounts to is, you didn't just approve the whole thing and say, here it is, like some people do, and say, well, now you're going to have to read it, find out what's in it. You read it ahead of time, and you know what's in it. Okay? One of the things we discussed, and I ask you a question about, is, this is complaint-driven by tenant. What if the tenant files a complaint, and you go out, and the landlord literally stands in front of the home and says, no, you're not going in, this is my property, just forget it, I'm telling you, you can't go in? This was one of the questions I had in... This was one of the questions I had, and you were going to research that. What is our procedure in a situation like that?
Yes, sir. And in that situation, you know, the tenants do have certain tenant rights that give them the ability to allow people as they wish to come in. But in that situation, we would not want to try to put ourselves in a bad situation or create conflict. So we'd leave, and we'd go back and get with the city attorney and apply for an administrative warrant that would allow us the ability, we'd go back with a police officer and administer that warrant, that would give us the ability to go inside and do an investigation. It's not a search, it's just a search warrant, it doesn't give us the ability to seize anything, just to look and potentially take pictures. We do have to have valid cause to get that warrant, and so it would just let us do that investigation.
I mean, what I was in, for instance, something like the tenant says, "We've had a water leak, and my ceiling's falling in, and my light fixture's hanging from the ceiling on one cord." And so you have a legal process. Now, is this through our municipal court judge, or do you have to go higher up?
Yes, sir. Since our municipal court judges, a magistrate, under the Section 1805 of the Code of Criminal Procedures, it does allow the municipal court judge to issue that administrative warrant.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Shirley?
One more, Mayor. Reading through the code, I noted there are a lot of specific requirements with respect to number of windows in a particular type of room, minimum sizes of the rooms depending upon occupancy, number of smoke alarms. If there is a conflict with another section of our Code of Ordinances, which prevail?
Generally speaking, the more stringent would prevail. The beauty of having, adopting a model code is that it is going to be consistent with all of our other adopted codes, but if we had a local code that may be a little inconsistent, the more restrictive one would prevail when it comes to life safety.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright?
Mr. Shirley, one of the things I was wondering about on this, with the comprehensive plan, we were looking at being able to demolish dilapidated buildings, and they said one of the big problems was, you have to go through the courts, you have to find out who owns it, you have to find the heirs, and all that kind of thing. Will this help us in that, or is it, are we still going to have to use all the same procedures?
Yes, and yes. This will have a long-term impact in that this would prevent demolition by neglect. Therefore, hopefully, these properties that we all know around town that have been sitting there for 20 years, that have fallen into disrepair, this would allow us to catch them before they get to that point. Now, it's not going to change the process that we have to go through with those that are already substandard, but hopefully, long-term, if we start now, once we get through that list, then we'll just go through and hold people accountable for property maintenance. We'll only have to worry about taking people to court when maybe there's a structure that's damaged by natural causes, instead of just demolition by neglect.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Shirley.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Items of community interest.
Nothing to say, Mayor.
Mr. Moore. Ms. Noddy.
Yes. I'd like to say kudos to Joyce and Bian at the Boys and Girls Club. They had their first, no, their fourth event for extended teen night. Guys, this has proven to be very, very successful in getting, giving teens an opportunity to do something on Friday nights. The next one will be April 8th. If you're not busy, come out, it makes for a great date. Chief Bishop and his wife were there this past Friday. Also, on tomorrow, 12 noon, we'll be having a crosswalk. And guys, hopefully, this will be symbolic of what Christ did for us, and give the city of Longview a chance to have some spiritual awareness, and hopefully, to generate prayer for not only the city of Longview, but especially for South Longview. So if you guys are not doing anything on tomorrow, we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Bring your tennis shoes.
Yeah.
Bring your tennis shoes, and we're going to divide in teams and walk through Districts 2 and 3 in prayer for the communities that have been most affected by crime. And on Saturday, we're just so blessed to have the Jesus Burger Shade Tree Ministry. As many of you know, they have their ministry ongoing on Saturdays, and the Lord has blessed them to be able to try to move on, in a different area of town, being South Longview. So we will be there on Saturday at 4 o'clock, is that the right time? At South Ward Elementary School, and we'd like to thank LISD for allowing us to be at South Ward Park. The Eastside Community Corporation, Inc., Masquerade Gala Ball is tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, at East Texas Builders Association. If you're not busy, please put on your formal attire and show up at 7:00 PM, $2 for $50. So that's going to be a great event. Last but not least, today, our very first official food truck vendor in the city of Longview. I happen to be a development services for another meeting, and that's Mr. Hank Guchelar, and he is our first official, meaning paid and legal vendor in the city of Longview with his truck, the rolling hunger, thunder, hunger. Okay. I can't read it real well. Anyway, does that say thunder or hunger? Okay. Hunger, I'm sorry. And so it's misposted on Facebook. But anyway, that's just great, and that just is a testament to show what we've been doing, and all the time Councilmember Moore's put into it, and our task force, it works. And we do have people in our community that will support it. So we're excited for Hank, and congratulations.
Mrs. Yara?
Nothing.
Mr. Wright?
Nothing.
Mr. Allen?
First off, I'd like to say thank you to my lovely wife that's accompanying me here tonight.
Where is Mr.?
And I did tell her I'd take her out for supper afterwards.
That's it, sir?
That's it.
Mr. Willard?
Yes.
Okay. The city offices will be closed Friday, March 25th, in observance of a Good Friday holiday. Longview Library will be closed Friday, March 25th to Sunday, June 27th. Downtown Lives at 5:00. Free events every Friday in April. Live music from 5:00 PM to 7:30 at the Corner of Green and Metthan. April 1st is Gin in Rio. I don't know how many of y'all have been to those before, but they are fantastic. I went to almost every one of them last year, and I had a blast. The weather's great, people can, people gather and visit and hear great music, and maybe Hank will bring his food truck out there and sell you some food. But it's a great time to get in downtown and enjoy this, so this is a great thing in April, and I'm glad that we're continuing this process. It's really fun. Longview Green and Clean Recycle Drop Off and Community Wide Cleanup, Saturday, April 9th, from 8:00 AM to noon at Lear Park. For more information, go to longviewtexas.gov/LGC. Okay. High school seniors. Mayor Mack Scholarship applications are due next Friday, April 1st, that's the deadline. So get your application in, write your essay, I'm looking forward to reading every single one of them. I've been very encouraged by what I've seen so far, and I think we're going to have a lot of fun with this, and I appreciate the effort put out by high school seniors, and hopefully, they will, there'll be four lucky winners that will be able to further their college education and do something with that. Okay. Survey time. Currently, our public transit system, bus system, does not operate on Sundays. Would you support Longview Transit operating on Sundays so that people could go to work or worship? Well, overwhelmingly, of course, we said yes, 89%. That's a gimme. The good thing is, is to see that the heart of Longview is where it should be. Now, can we do this? Will we do this? I don't know. It's so funny, every time I put a survey question up, I get these reports that all of a sudden, it's a done deal. I wish it worked like that, it just doesn't. You know, what this does show, though, is that there is a desire, and we're looking at the needs. And this is something that I bring up, because this is something I talked about during my campaign, and I try to hold up to all of my campaign promises, and I talked about this, and we're looking into it. And I know Scott Lewis has done a really good job of getting us information, Mr. Willard has been very instrumental in getting some figures together, and some options. But the goal of this is to evaluate, is there a need, and can we afford it? Okay? Because even if there's a need and we can't afford it, it doesn't matter. There's a need for a dome stadium in the Dallas Cowboys, we can't afford that either. But if there is a need and we can afford it, then that's what we should be doing with taxpayer dollars. There's a couple options on the table. We've looked at extending services during weekdays and on Saturdays. That might be more effective than adding a Sunday service. And they've already done a cost analysis, and it's very close, it's almost negligible, the difference in extending two hours every day, Monday through Saturday, versus doing a one-day thing on Sunday. So we're going to look into this, we're going to evaluate it and see what would be the most, I wish we could do both. Wouldn't it be fantastic if we could actually provide a bus system in Longview that did both? And who knows, maybe we can. But we're going to look and see what is most effective and what is most cost-effective, and if we can do it, we'll see about that at future meetings. But I was glad to see that 89% of people in Longview would support that, because I think that's the right thing to do. Second question. We recently experienced daylight savings time. Which of the following do you prefer? When it's darker in the morning but stays light longer, which is now, or when it's light in the morning but gets dark earlier, or I don't have a preference? Well, 73% like it now. Isn't it nice to be able to come home and have time after work and enjoy the wonderful spring evenings as it stays daylight till, you know, 7:30, 8:00? I really enjoy that time of year. So I'm glad that that survey worked out as well. Book club. The video? Let's have it.
Here we are already on our last week of the energy bus. This has been another great experience for me, as I learn and grow with all of you, driving with purpose. Over the holidays, I was at the mall, and I noticed a woman on a mission. You know what kind of woman I'm talking about? The kind that knows what she needs to accomplish and marches into the store and gets it done. Purpose is the ultimate fuel for our journey, just like that lady on a purpose for finishing up her holiday shopping. Without a why or a purpose, many things are left undone. I love the story about the janitor at Nassau that did his job with such purpose that he knew he was part of a greater mission, and that he was putting a man on the moon. May we all drive our buses with such purpose and intentionality so that we realize our ultimate goals? I know I'm a better person on this book study, and I hope that you are, too. Thank you for joining me on another great ride. Now, jump on the bus with me, and let's drive Longview for a minute.
He was driving the bus?
No. They wouldn't let me drive it. I almost hijacked it, but I thought I'd build a news for that, too, so I didn't hijack that bus. It was a very nice bus, I think it was brand new, I could live in that thing. Okay. And the video reminds me of just that story, when you read the book, and you talk about the janitor, who is a janitor at Nassau, and someone asks him, "What do you do?" And he goes, "I put men on the moon." And you know what? He does, because he has a purpose, and he takes his job seriously, he has pride in what he does, he does with energy and zeal that make others want to do the same thing. You know, as I've gone through this study and the previous study in The Go-Giver, both of these books have shown me just how shallow I really am, or especially how shallow I used to be. I hope I've grown from both of these books, because if you can't read this book and grasp something from it, you just didn't read it well enough. Read it again. Because every chapter that I read, every scenario that came about, I could apply to my life. And I think so many of you all, as have shown in our Monday night forums, they're applying it to their lives as well. And if we do that, gentlemen, we can make such a difference in how we interact as a community, how we interact with each other, with your families, at work, at school, wherever you do, whatever you do, it does make a difference. And, you know, I've enjoyed this book. John Gordon is just, he's become one of my heroes, he's so inspiring in everything that he writes on Facebook, his daily post just lift me up. I'm addicted to the guy, and I love being a part of something like this. And I appreciate y'all, I'll see some books here tonight, so some of y'all at least read it. I appreciate that. Any comments about it?
Yeah, Mayor, just quickly, this whole thing was about positive energy and moving forward, but it's also ultimately about creating a team effort that is positive and moves forward. And to me, the summary of the entire book is five ways to love your passengers, or five ways to love your team. And each of these five items, you know, make time for them, listen to them, recognize them, serve them, and bring out the best in them. To me, that's the bottom line of this book, and I really enjoyed reading it. Good choice.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'll tell you my favorite, because it lines up with a Sunday school study we're doing now about what your calling is, and how lots of us expect our calling to be something bigger than what we may be doing on a daily basis, but it doesn't have to be. One of the quotes in here is, "When you fuel up with purpose, you find the excitement in the mundane, the passion in the everyday, and the extraordinary in the ordinary." So if you consider what you're doing every day to be your purpose and your calling, you put your all in, and you find your passion and your purpose. And so it doesn't have to be something bigger that we're waiting to be called to, we're doing it right now every day.
Exactly right. Remember, gang, you're the driver of your bus. Don't, no one gets to drive your bus but you. If you don't like the direction your bus is going in, only you can change that. And if you allow other people to drive your bus, then you're not being the driver that you should. Beware of those energy vampires, those people that can bring you down. Learn to get away from that type of depressing energy, that type of negativity that just does you no good. Because I've said it a million times, negativity spurs negativity, and positivity spurs positivity. So I'll say that as long as I'm sitting in this chair, because I think Longview is going to be a positive community, and I'm going to do everything I can to ensure that. So thanks for the indulgence, city of Longview, the people that got involved in this book, it was wonderful. It's been another great study. We're going to do another, we're going to take a few months off and give it a rest, because I'm tired. We're going to take a little bit of time and regroup, but we'll do another book soon. I've already got kind of some ideas on where we're going to go with that. But thank you for participating. Thank you all, council, city manager, staff. I know it's been nice seeing you all on Monday nights when you join in, and it's refreshing to see that you will do something outside of the box, because I can tell you, this is as far outside of the box as I've been in a long time.